As the board of committee matter, this is John Regan of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Duark Ashnell.
Present.
Ronald Brooks.
Present.
Sierra Smara.
Here.
Jason Assarifi.
Present.
Len Feldman.
Present.
Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town planter Anna Menard.
Here.
Staff assistant Danielle Chamberlain Roberts.
Here.
This is the open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, November 14th, 2023, now called order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted as a hybrid format under Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022. This meeting, the planning board is convening in person and by remote access. Remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that the meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? Being none, according to those members of the planning board, employees, and members of the public who participate remotely, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please rise and join us in a salute to the flag.
(Inaudible)
All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. First on the agenda tonight is A&amp;R Maria Avenue. Is there anyone here representing Maria Avenue? So they made some changes, Adam?
I, yes. Philip was impressed from last meeting, they added the language "back area lot two R", that's not a buildable portion of the lot.
Okay.
So they can only build here where they have the frontage, and the other area is not a buildable lot.
Because they...
Because they don't have the frontage.
Okay.
They'd have to come back for possibly a hamhead to build a lot.
So, may anybody in the audience have any questions? Being none, may I have a motion to approve as presented from Maria Avenue?
I'll move.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Smara?
Aye.
Sierra?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye, it is a vote. I want to sign them.
I'll sign them all.
Sign them now. You okay?
Yeah.
He's just signing them, passing them down so they can be signing while you're doing the rest.
You think? I'm sorry.
Do you want to sign them out pink?
No, I don't think that's appropriate.
If you had a pink pen the last minute.
It's a red pen.
a special permit under Section 9.3.1.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a personal wireless service facility at 404 Washington Street, Auburn, Mass. Map 50, parcel 2365. Is anyone here from Datacom?
Yes, sir. Ken Rogers is here.
So can you just give us a rundown, Ken, of what you exactly plan to do there?
It's an existing site, sir. We bought the site from a company called TelSite, and then it has subsequently, within the company, we moved the ownership to this entity of ours, and, you know, it's just my understanding that we need to, we have to get our own special zoning permit once the ownership changes, so that's really what we're asking for.
You're not really doing anything?
No. We're not doing anything.
You're just going to reuse the tower and everything that's there, you're not doing any construction, nothing?
Nothing, no, sir.
Okay. Does anyone in the audience have any questions? Being none, does anybody on the board have any questions?
One question. So I think just for Adam, the only reason why we are seeking fire departments comment is purely because of the change of ownership, right? Just change the name.
We have to, the change in ownership requires a change in special permit, so just that's the whole process of a special permit, ask for comments and such.
And we did put the, we did put the new signage that the fire department requested on the site.
May I have a motion to approve as submitted?
Some moved.
Second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Jason?
Aye.
Sierra?
Aye.
Duark Ashnell?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye, it is a vote. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Next up on the agenda is applicant Casella Waste Systems requesting site plan approval under Section 9.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an additional, addition of a storage area at the existing facility of 15 Hardscrabble Road, Auburn, Mass. 15501, map 42 lot two. Mr. Walsh here. There you are.
Michael Walsh from Walsh Engineering Associates, as mentioned. Casella Waste Systems, on behalf of Paul Degnan, Degnan is here along with me, he's the market area manager.
Will you appear at the stage? We can't really hear you.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
I can hear that.
Verizon commercial.
So, yeah, Paul Degnan is the market area manager, if you didn't hear that, from Casella Waste Systems. If it is okay with the board, I'd like to present at least drawings and some images to follow along with the talk. What's the matter? Is it this? So as we discussed previously in the previous meeting, I'll review some of those items and try to go through the plans again, if it pleases the board. So the facility lot area is approximately 9.1 acres. The facility has 3,100 square feet of office space and 60,000 square feet of warehouse space. They receive and process recyclables onsite, sort them, bale them, ship them downstream for, as product for use in new products. They also receive MSW municipal solid waste and transfer that onsite to be disposed at other locations downstream.
What kind of solid waste?
Municipal solid waste, garbage, residential, commercial, refuse. This application proposes a new storage area, or at least a reconstructed storage area in the middle of the site. In this image, you can see a dashed border around a small area in the midst of the facility In this general area here, it's an existing slab area, concrete slab and paved area. They do use it for storage, but the purpose of this is to be able to construct a roof structure over it for protected storage, which will include fire suppression and protection from stormwater, and a little bit more efficient use of that slab. The slab actually, a portion of it will be demoed and replaced, really just to maximize the spacing of the interior walls that'll support the roof structure, so that you can fit generally four-by-four-by-four-foot bales more efficiently in that area. Let's see if I can scroll down. This gives a little, little better view of what's proposed, at least in plan view. So the, it sits right in that, that grayed-out area, that darker gray area in the middle, and it's got, like I said, footers for structural steel, roof system, three-sided enclosure, and that's where recyclables will be restored. They have several streams that come out of there, generally there's paper, cardboard, plastics. What am I missing, Paul? Metals. How could I miss metals? But basically all sorted in similar ways, but baled in identical ways, generally with those dimensions, so it's an efficient way to protect them, and it addresses some concerns of the fire department to provide fire suppression in that area, given that there's cardboard and plastics and other materials, paper. The engineering, civil engineering was done by our firm, Walsh Engineering Associates, by a licensed mass engineer or registered. The structural design was completed by Brian Kavanaugh, a registered structural engineer from McCree Structural Design in North Andover. Scroll down a couple of sheets here. This gives you a little closer view. I don't know if you remember your orientation, this is the open side towards the floor would be in the northern direction, the building, existing building that it's being constructed against is in the southern direction. Bales would generally come out of this part of the warehouse by forklift, brought into this area for temporary storage, and then shipped offsite with a load, from a loading dock that is immediately adjacent to it. This just gives a general layout of the bale storage, basically four-by-four, plan view of four-by-four-foot bale storage and what the capacity may be. Included in this, we did do a lighting design, obviously for the new structure, there needs to be lighting. There's existing lighting around the side of the building. If you look in this direction, that's the loading dock, this is the, this is the proposed roof structure of the concrete slab. Lighting within the slab and lighting on the building itself, replaced lighting, just to meet the criteria of the town and not cause a nuisance with light in the area. I'll go through this briefly. This is the structural design drawings that were included, that you've probably reviewed. Again, it's a steel frame structure on concrete walls and footers. Those footers would be constructed. A portion of the existing slab, or a good portion of it, will be excavated, demoed, excavated, and moved offsite. Let me just kind of back up a little bit. This gives you a little better view of a section of, in the lower left, of the structural steel system. On your right side, there's an existing roof structure there, and that's where some glass, waste glass material is stored and eventually loaded out, so that's going to remain in place, and this will butt against that, and you'll see the, you see the structural walls there and the structural steel system and roof.
Is that one on the far right, is that covered already, or are you putting the roof over that too?
It is, it is covered, and the roofs will be joined in a way that water will still cascade off the roof system and not between them. So that's a brief overview of the drawings themselves. In general, let's go back up just to try to give you a review of the site. Anyways, we're just scrolling. In general, the, this is currently concrete area that most of the work is in. There's an adjacent area where some grating will occur, where the asphalt will be removed and replaced, just to give safe access with, with the slight changes in elevations from a step slab, from one step slab to another. And so that's the, that's the majority of the work. I think it's a pretty straightforward project. There's really no change in stormwater, it's all impervious. It's simply a roof over an existing area of storage. And I mentioned before, one of the real benefits, or a couple of benefits, obviously, are fire protection and protection of stormwater from contacting it on a regular basis. In general, the capacity, if we assume solely two bales high, it's approximately 585 bales. In talking with Paul, and their, their health and safety system requires that some bales can be, can be stacked too high, and at a maximum of three. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's a health and safety issue for your firm?
It really depends, depends on the material. Ultimately, OSHA, OSHA requires the proper storage of materials, so the stacking of materials falls under OSHA. Depending upon the material and the size of the bales would depend upon whether or not we can go too high or three high.
So, obviously, there's a benefit to do it. I think it's a worthwhile project for them, and we've had our eyes on it for a little while, so we're anxious to, to find approval for that and move forward. We did have some discussion about, in the last meeting, about dimensions of the slab itself and concern about the loads. I had a discussion with Brian Kavanaugh, the structural engineer, and he was, guy pressed him on it, and he was confident in his application of thickened welded wire mesh and eight-inch thick concrete, that given the loads of those four-by-four, four bales of those materials, that there was sufficient strength there to, to manage that. And a demolition permit has not been submitted yet. We haven't seen the approved land disturbance permit as of yet, so once that is approved, we'll submit for the demo permit from the town. I, if you're interested, I have just a little documentation of improvements that they've made at the facility in regards to stormwater. If you're interested in viewing it, it's probably about 10 minutes, five to 10 minutes, if it pleases the board. Might take me longer to find it. Let's hope not. We're not going to win any awards for the presentation here, but I think it at least gives you a visual of some of the things onsite that have occurred and give you some reasoning. One of the larger projects that we were involved with was, in 2016, was replacement of an oil-water separator. One of the things in their site assignment is a requirement to have a specifically 10,000-gallon oil-water separator. I believe it was installed originally around 1995, when the facility was constructed by BFI, and this is a similar tank, a double-walled tank, you know, monitoring systems within the building to monitor it, and it's pretty effective at what it does. And basically, for the drainage area that's collected there, all low flows go through that system before it discharges into the pond and before it discharges offsite.
Do they go to the detention basin first, before it goes to the pond?
It, so in low-flow conditions, it handles, I think it's 100, I'll, I'll go back on that. It has a maximum capacity under, under flow conditions, and there is a diversion, so in really heavy storm events, there is a diversion pipe gradient of it that will divert water directly to the pond.
When you say pond, you mean... Pond across the street.
Right. No, no, all directly to the detention pond. Thanks, Paul, for clarifying that. So, yeah, that was, that was done in 2016, it wasn't either. We were, you know, in inspections by contractors and cleaning, it's cleaned annually at a minimum. Screens are cleaned, kept in good working order, but they noticed in the, in the 401 that there started to be some rust in the bottom of the tank and so forth, so that's the reason why it was replaced at the time.
Did it last time at this time?
No, went with steel again. Yeah, one of it was the depth. It actually had to be pretty deep.
That's pretty deep.
The top of the tank is over eight feet below grade.
It was put in a Chelsea, 10 people, a top grade, 20,000, back to last night.
Yeah.
The ledge rock, I think was a concern.
That too, yeah. It, there was significant bedrock, they pulled out a, what was about the size of a Volkswagen, which is still onsite. Paul appreciated it, and they made it a nice landscaping portion of the site. So that's the oil-water separator. Need the page down on this. Let's see here. And then the, I think we talked about this at the previous meeting, the roof system happens to be a galvanized roof system, so zinc is present, and obviously, you may know this, it's a pollutant in stormwater. So there was two different systems, well, similar systems placed in two different areas of the site. The northern one was in, placed in 2017 and followed up in 2018 with one in the southern portion of the site. They are, happen to be manufactured by Stormwater RX out of Portland, Oregon, extremely efficient at removing metals from stormwater. Been really pleased with their performance, really high rates of removals. And again, very similar, in the middle here, I guess you can see the tank itself, they're pretty sizable, and, you know, again, with some bypass capacity and real high flows that you don't see the, you know, the contaminants in those situations when you get to those One of the, another project was at the, you happen to be looking at, in the right-hand picture, the MSW loadout bay, so that's when garbage is dumped on the floor temporarily and then moved consolidated into trailers for disposal at incinerators or typically landfills or incinerators. There was some concern that, about the potential for tracking out of their stormwater that may have been impacted by MSW, so we designed adjacent trench drains, one to catch any water that may come out, and then, you know, at the same time, it's sloped inward, unfortunately, so another one to collect stormwater and keep that in the system, so just to separate the potential for stormwater contact with it. Goes through an oil grit separator, and see the two trench drains, I guess in the upper left. In the lower left is an oil grit separator before it goes to sewer, so that was a solution for that area. 2020, some additional stormwater improvements on the southern side in this same general area where the quote-unquote tipping floor is for recyclables and solid waste or garbage. On the left side, you'll see new catch basins that were placed in this integrated system, including a 72-foot-long trench drain you see in the middle upper picture that was installed to better capture activities that happened in that general area with traffic and tipping. Below, in the lower right, that happens to be the, the oil grit separator, or the oil-water separators and water quality devices we've used onsite. They're, they're pretty, pretty efficient at removing sediment and contaminants as a really good pretreatment device, and we've seen great results here and at other facilities, similar facilities. They have an internal bypass, so when high flows, it's not in line, it doesn't suspend sediment again, it quiets it down. It quiets it down, settles in two different chambers, uh, eventually discharges, um, to the system, but terribly efficient units. And then the last one was, um, really some, some paving improvements. Uh, in the upper left, you can see it was an old scale area, truck scale area next to their detention pond. And there were some old slabs that that just caused some depressions over time, some rutting, um, as well as at their, their scale, their new, newer scale that is in the opposite end of that photo in the upper left. But really the, the issue with that is getting better drainage. The, the grade was elevated in the center of this section and it sits directly below where this, uh, generally where the, uh, where the roof storage area is. But one of the great benefits was, one, being able to get in the bottom left, yet another pretreatment device, a Clara unit, Stormwater RX Clara unit, sediment, uh, for sediment removal in the system. And, uh, it also benefited, one of the great benefits was sweeping. Sweeping is much more effective when you have consistent pavement grades and not ruts and potential areas for it to pool. So, so those are some of the things. We didn't actually capture all of them. Here's a high efficiency sweeper that they had acquired a handful of years ago, um, as well as, and I forgot about this at the last meeting, the, uh, the sweeper that's used on a, on a skid steer that's, uh, really helpful to get in some of the smaller spaces, uh, in tighter areas that the larger sweeper can't get to. And I think we've found, even found pretty good results with sweeping activities recently. This just happens to be part of the plan that we worked with, with Paul on. I'm just laying out, just so everyone is clear on the expectations of sweeping for the site. So it's done a minimum twice, uh, per day for operating day. We laid out the green area, if you can see it, is for this larger Pelican high efficiency sweeper. And some of the blue areas, um, those blue areas are noted with rotary broom that's on the cat, the cat skid steer. And then there's a smaller area there in the pink in the middle where it's just not, it really needs manual sweeping to try to free up some of those areas from sediment debris. I think I went over my 10 minutes there. I apologize. Hopefully it was informative.
Very informative. I appreciate it. Is that all you have for presentation?
Yeah. I think if you're.
I didn't want to cut you off.
No, I, you know, there's, there's minor changes to the plans, but nothing significant. So, um, I'm certainly open to any questions you might have.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions? Being done, is anybody on the board have any questions? Ron?
My main concern is burning pollutants or contaminants that will leave your facility or property and enter that reservoir at which, in which further down the line feeds our town wells.
Right. And I, you know, those are some of the efforts, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to show that, that there has been an ongoing awareness and investment in these systems to provide pretreatment and treatment facilities on site to minimize that potential.
Because it's my feeling that there should be nothing going into that reservoir.
Yeah, and I think in general.
Why would we even let you be there if we could stop you?
Yeah, I, I think, um, basically like on the south area, we've, we've collected generally what we can, it by gravity get to the pond and to the oil water separator, well, through pretreatment systems and the oil water separator and to the pond. At some point, as you get to those entrances and the grades drop, the whole, the whole site is on a slope, as you probably know.
I've looked at it many times.
And, uh, so, you know, from my opinion, we've captured, basically, given the current situation, we've captured as much as we reasonably can and make sure that it's got pretreatment and treatment at a minimum.
And you talked about catch basins?
Yeah.
In the road?
Uh, I haven't talked about it, but there are two sets of catch basins generally in, I think.
In hard scrubbed road.
Scrabble in that area.
And when anything that goes into the, rainwater and drainage could run from your property into those catch basins?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, yeah, yes, certainly.
Does it go after it's in the catch basin?
I will say that it's not just this facility though. There, there is.
Republic and the others.
Yeah, there are other contributions to it and the turnaround, there's some, some gravity or some drainage that comes from that area.
Where does it go from the catch basin?
Uh, the catch basin is discharged across the street. Uh, yeah, it hits a swell, yeah, and goes towards, uh, dark progress war.
Because it's just my contention that there should be zero going into that pond.
Anybody else have any questions?
One question. Like the, uh, so in, I think in the last discussions, we were talking about the structural integrity of this lab?
Yes.
How much load can hold up? Is there, is there any updates on that? Do you have any thoughts?
Sorry about that. We did, I did review it with Brian Kavanaugh, who's a structural engineer for the project, and he was confident that their design more than, is adequate, is more than adequate for those loads, given the materials and the density of those, uh, those bales. You know, it's a system, right? It's the soils beneath, it's the, it's the concrete, it's the welded wire mesh. There is a rebar in the slab, although it's at the end of the, the thickened slab, just as a preventative measure. We had it thickened, um, on the edge of where, where equipment would enter in higher loads. So there's number two, well, two number five bars, uh, reinforcing bars that are in that thickened slab. And we do have the dimensions on that. It was noted, I think by the chairman, um, that it wasn't clear, but the dimensions of that thickened slab, um, should be clear on the drawings that you have in front of you. And I can probably get to it at some point.
I just have a couple. So just as a estimate, how much of the rainwater goes through the pretreatment before it gets to the pond? What percentage would you say? 90%? 95? 80? I have no idea.
It's all based on the storm event, right? So then, so, yeah, as you probably.
I'm talking about the hundred year storm because nobody can plan for that. We plan, but it doesn't work ever.
Right, correct.
Like on, you know, one inch, inch and a half rainstorm over a day.
Yeah, you know, I, I think those smaller rain events, and I'd have to go back to the calculations, but there's two things at play. There's, there is a diversion in the drainage system itself. So at very high flows, like I mentioned, it'll divert directly to the pond rather than.
And that's detained until whenever.
But then there's a secondary diversion, you know, essentially within the oil water separate at some point that flows through as well. So it's hard for me to, to give a percentage. I'm sure we could calculate and give you a better answer.
I was just curious if you had an idea.
May I ask the percentage of the green, for example? What percentage of the green flows through our system versus offsite? Is that the question?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I would say it's, this is, this is obviously a guesstimate on my part, but I'll, and I'll try to back it up with at least some, some images here, but I'd say around 90% of that area. Maybe higher than that, but I'd hate to, um, if I can get back to.
It's really just the entrance and exit?
Yeah, I could.
The trench drain down, yeah.
Yeah, I'd have to. Yeah, it really is. There's a, um, a smaller area on the northern, uh, entrance, that truly, I guess, is the entrance to the site. That's a smaller area at the end of the pond. There is a catch basin just at the, uh, just at the far end of that detention pond, and that captures a great deal of it. But there is a triangular area that goes down the drive there, the, the entrance that's not captured. There's a slightly larger area down at the, what is their exit, which is the southern opening to the site. And yeah, it, those are the two areas. It's, it's a bit larger than the, uh, than the northern area.
The other question I had was, um, on the demo of the slab, is there's, there's existing concrete there now, correct?
There is.
So in order to make a step, you have to demo it all, don't you?
We do. You know, it, it's unfortunate, and we had discussions with Paul about this, and it doesn't please him that we're taking it up. You know, it is useful currently, but by the time you, one, to get real efficiency in, in stacking it, I said more than once today.
You want to reinvent the wheel and slab that it would rip it up with this, and I guarantee it.
Yeah, and, and putting in the foundation walls, you're excavating for that. What remained was very little in the midst and it was harder to tie together than have one competent slab.
So I noticed that on your details, your middle detail for one of the walls, it's cantilevered, which I understand. But the one on the left and the, the one on the left doesn't, which is the regular T. So on the.
Which sheet are you on?
On the uphill side, right? The furthest one up from the road wall. Is that holding back any earth or is that just a, a separate wall to separate, you know, make the three, three bays?
Are the three bays the one closest to the building or, well?
Further to the west.
Yeah, it's, it's not retaining any soil necessarily.
So I was curious about. And then, uh, my only other question is, what type of fire prevention system are you putting in for that system?
It's a dry system.
Dry system?
It's not a halon, it's water, it is water and it's coming off the existing, uh, fire protection for the facility, but it's dry unless actuated is the term. So it's a.
It won't freeze.
It's water, exactly. Won't freeze in the pipes.
That's what I was curious about. That's all I had.
Another question for Adam is, um, do, does the fire department need to review this?
They have.
They have.
They have, okay. They, they talk with them all the time.
Yeah, I think Paul has a pretty good relationship with the fire department, at least open conversations with the fire department. We've, we've attended two DCG meetings about this, this topic and this proposal. So, um, I know, um, Inspector, I may get that right, Jake Nunnamaker, um, very aware of it, had several conversations with him.
Being done, may I have a motion to approve as presented?
Close the hearing first.
May I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 May I have a motion to approve as presented?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much to the board.
Welcome. Appreciate your time and all the effort you put in, believe me. I do. Next on the agenda is applicant Herb Campbell requesting site plan approval under section 3.2.5.1.5 of the urban zoning bylaw for a motor vehicle. Hailed at 25 Southwood Street, Augur Matts, 01501, Avenue 6, Priceline 153, continued
Good evening. My name's Herb Campbell. I'm a resident in Worcester Mass at Blackthorne Drive. I'm requesting, I'm here for the second time, I'm requesting a, um, license to sell. Originally it was for four motor vehicles, we reduced it to two. There were some concerns about, uh, available parking and some drainage issues in an area where there was crushed stone. We will not be using that, all the, reduce it to two cars and we will only be placing those vehicles on asphalt. I submitted a plan with the parking lot and just a brief narrative as to the use of the property. And as I stated earlier in the first original meeting, that it'll be just used for the two cars, there'll be no, uh, no mechanical work done, no reconditioning of any kind, uh, buffing, cleaning, there'll be nothing done to the vehicles on property on site at all. Just, just there for the purpose of display, that's it. Pretty cut and dry.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions? Could you please step up to the microphone and give your name and address? Please? You have to get close to the mic, we can't hear you. Still can't hear you.
Two boys, 15 and 19, Southwood.
That's close, yep.
I have a number of questions. So the first meeting, I had questioned, um, how many businesses can be run out of one address? So now my question, after being here tonight and hearing that there was a change in ownership and now they have to come and get their site plan approval or their special permit, they already have an electrical business that's running in there.
Apples and oranges.
I understand that. But they don't have the parking that they claim to have. This, there's, there's nothing accurate about this. This is like Donald Trump stuff. That they don't have.
It's like what?
This, this math doesn't even add up. They have 42 feet here, they're claiming they're getting six parking spots. A parking spot is nine feet wide. Even eight, so they still don't have enough. And they're not parking them straight across like that. On any given day, there's anywhere from four to nine vehicles already parked in there because they have the electrical company vehicles. And then they must, I don't know how many employees he has in his electrical company, but there are pickup trucks left in their parking lot all day long. They have two tenants, the tenants are parking here and here. They're claiming these two spots right here, they don't have two spots right there. They have a dumpster in the middle of it, they don't have 18 feet between the two houses. Between number 25 and number 23, there's only 15 feet there. So where does he get 18 feet for two parking spots here? He doesn't have two parking spots here. According to all these bylaws, he doesn't even have these four parking spots here because he's not supposed to park 10 feet from the borderline. So he's already overrun with parking spots from his electrical company. He has tenants there that he's have to have four spots for. I don't think he has.
I don't know about a law that says you can't park less than 10 feet from the property line. You can't build less than 10 feet from the property line without a special permit. But if you go 10 feet from the property line that you can't park, you gotta close Shaw's, you gotta close TJ Maxx.
I understand that.
Cause they're all with 10.
I'm just reading, I'm just reading from the, that's what I read from the bylaw, that's, that's there. But it's still, this does not add up. He doesn't have enough parking there to begin with to run his electrical company, much less have additional parking spots to be selling cars.
You don't own the electric company, do you?
Excuse me?
You don't own the electric supply company, do you?
I do not.
Does your son own that?
He does.
So he has an electrical company there, he has tenants there, he doesn't have four spots for his tenants. And he's supposed to have so many spots per employee? The place is full of pickup trucks all day long. Where's, where's he gonna be selling cars? That corner is so dangerous and the traffic there is so ridiculous as it is with all those 18 wheels with Polo. I don't know how he's gonna come and go through there. I don't even think they realize how many cars blow that stop sign at the corner of Elwood Street on a regular basis. The traffic down there is horrible. Right now, the way he's parking, he's not parking straight in. He's only getting four vehicles in at a 45 and they're practically out in the street as it is. I don't understand where he's gonna put any more vehicles. I don't think he ever got a special permit or a site plan. What was this, where's the site plan approval for his electrical business? Did he come before this board?
Electrical business has been there long before I was on the board.
No, it's only been there for a year.
That building's been there way longer than here.
The building's been there, but the electrical company, his other partner there, that business has only been there for a year. He just bought the place a year ago. So that's what I'm saying, is he supposed to come before this board again and get a special permit? Or site plan approval?
Radio tower is different than a building, a lot different. So he bought the building, he didn't buy the business. They bought a business. They ended up keeping the business the same. So in that light, they have to have a special permit. I don't think it was an electrical warehouse before that, it was something else. Now it's an electrical warehouse. They're not keeping the business the same. They don't need to come back for a special permit. He changed the business, building's there. He has to come before the town to get a, a license.
But, so the electrical business still has to meet the regulations for parking, don't they?
Well, yes, but they don't, they don't have to come before the planning board if they sell a business. they don't have to come before the planning board if they sell a business. If that was the case, we'd be here every night, 365 days a year. There's more businesses bought and sold in Auburn you could shake a stick at. And you don't have to come before the planning board.
I understand that, but when you're running a business in there, aren't you supposed to conform to the parking regulations? He doesn't have enough space down there now as it is.
I don't know what the actual dimensions of the building are, I mean, I see him here, I don't know how many employees are there. All I can say is we may have to go to the zoning board for this. Or ask for a site plan that's been surveyed by a professional surveyor and stamped. But my my question to you is he's gonna put two cars there and they're up on the west side of the electrical warehouse facing Southwood Street. How does that affect you?
He's gonna put them where?
Where it says inventory.
He's already got those spots filled every day. How can he put inventory there if he's got trucks parked there every day? He's got employee trucks parked there every day.
This is a proposal to do this. It doesn't say he's not gonna park those trucks elsewhere or have the trucks not come there. I don't know that, you don't know that. All I can go by is what he's shown here, for two cars for inventory. And it's far off the street. I mean, I don't know about angle parking, I'm not around during the day, I leave a tenant for, I get home in the dark, so I don't see it during the day. So we may ask for a survey plan with it stamped, with everything marked out on a plan. That'd be the best I can do. Then we can go to the zoning board if we have to, or we can determine the number of parking spaces per unit. If he has
He doesn't have all of these parking spaces.
I don't know that, you don't know that. The only one's gonna be able to tell me that is a is a professional land surveyor.
I can tell you that just looking at it.
Did you go measure these?
I'm sorry?
Did you go measure all these distances? Did you go measure all these distances?
Not every single one, but some of them I did.
So you trespass on his property to get your measurements? Just saying. You know, we're splitting hairs here.
It's just a very dangerous corner to be having that kind of traffic.
No question.
And now you're gonna have people, he's gonna put cars up there for sale and the first thing they're gonna do is they're gonna pull over to the side of the road. Right where all these 18-wheelers pull over.
He's not putting a sign out in front. He doesn't have a permit to put a sign out by the road saying use cars. He may have a placard on the building, but is there really gonna be anything out by Route 12? So it's gonna be mostly by advertisement, Craigslist, and word of mouth, I would think, for him to be able to sell a car.
But he's got a boatload of vehicles over there now, he doesn't have any room, he doesn't meet he doesn't meet all the requirements for what he's doing now, much less adding cars to it.
Your son owns the electrical business, right?
Yes, he does.
Does he own the two houses for the tenants as well?
He owns the two family and the electrical shop.
What about the other tenant? There's two tenant buildings here, right?
Two tenants.
No, there's one, there's one, there's one.
One building with two tenants, okay.
And
He owns them both.
The only reason why the trucks are parked where they're parked right now is we haven't put the parking lot lines in because we're waiting for approval of our plan. And I can assure you that the 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 dimensions are accurate. It's just a matter of, we just, I believe my son just spent $35,000 resurfacing, getting it nice and neat and clean now. All we need to do is have a guy come in and stripe the lines. And once that, once that occurs, those designated areas will be designated areas and we won't be able to put vehicles someplace where you can't park. So whatever's there will have to conform to the to the to the to the lines or placement parking.
Exactly, and you're showing six parking spots along the side of the building, he can only fit four vehicles in there out of 45. He can't fit six vehicles over there pulling in straight against the building. He can't do it, there's not enough room. And especially with the tenants parked the way they're parked. Right now, ask them, all those trucks parked there, they're all in there out of 45, they're not in there and you can only fit four of them over there.
On which side of the building?
If you're facing the building, on the left side of the building, right over here.
Facing the building from what street, Southwood Street or Elmwood Street?
Adam, are you able to pull up a Google Maps so we can see area view?
These six spots that he has facing straight on into the building, he can't fit six vehicles there. Right now, he's parking four out of 45, right, like these yellow lines. He can only fit four vehicles over there. And this is the way they're parking them right now. They can't fit six vehicles going this way because the two tenants park this way. They'd never be able to back out without hitting the tenant if the tenant was home. They don't have six spots over here. They've got four at best. And they're parking them out of 45, not straight into the building. And there's no two spots up here. This is this is encroaching on the next door neighbor's property, there's no two spots there. There's only 15 feet between the house and the dumpster. You can only fit one car in there and that's where the tenant parks. This, this is non-existent.
They can always move the dumpster to give the tenants more place, more room to park.
Well, that's that's fine, but then he's gotta have access for the big dump truck to get in there to empty the dumpster. He doesn't have all of this parking that he's presenting here, that's what I'm saying. He doesn't have it.
I don't know that for a fact.
And if he has certain requirements for running the electrical business and he has to have X amount of parking spots, four for his tenants plus X amount of parking spots for his employees, for his electrical business, that doesn't leave any other room for selling anything.
We only have to leave one parking space for each tenant. He doesn't have to get two, he's just one.
Alright, but he still doesn't, he still doesn't have enough.
We're trying to bring it up on Google Maps now so we can actually see it from above. Does anyone else in the audience have any questions? Does anyone on the board have any questions regarding this?
Just a quick question, the, you know, just again, I don't I don't have a previous version of this plan, but sites three and four, or the spots three and four, are those, what are those?
I numbered these spots, one, two, three and four, correct?
Yep, they're parallel with the building.
Those are just, just general parking spots for the use of the, for the electrical people, I'm assuming. I'm only concerned with with two spots, which would be spot seven and spot eight. The rest of them are are just designation of spots that the property owner wants to 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 use for parking. And once it gets striped, wherever, I I understand that she's concerned that cars are parked sideways or whatever, but as soon as it gets striped, the vehicles will be in the proper spots. And and if they're on the spots, there won't be any vehicles. And I submit that the 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 plan is accurate and that the spaces are there. And once it's striped, we we will have to conform to those spots. And that's, if I could say I could put 16 or 20 spots, I'd say that, but I can't. This is all that we can put. And whether or not they'd all be utilized, I'm not sure. I can only tell you that I will utilize my two.
You got it up right behind you, don't.
Right, so so along here
Where the dumpster is, the dumpster's gonna move.
The dumpster's not staying there, the dumpster's gonna be on the other side of the building.
That's what I figured.
Yeah, yeah.
You got your two spots.
Until we stripe it.
Right. Well, you'll have a two tenant.
This is gonna end up over here and and his work vehicles are gonna be in in here. This this part has no parking or anything. They're just gonna use that for storage. We're not asking for any special parking or anything there. So but basically the parking will be here, here, and we originally were gonna go up here, but
It's stolen, you can't.
We didn't because there was a, there was an issue about the crushed stone. We just reduced it, instead of having a four-car license, we reduced it to two. And and those two spots will be right here, then the handicap spot. I I don't know if a survey is is necessary. We're all ready to go to stripe it. And I think once it's striped, that'll resolve the problem. Or the issue, anyway. No, there's nothing, nothing. Eyes, they have to conform, so. So here's the, here's the spots, one, two, three, four, five, six. Now the inventory is over here. Yeah, my two spots remain speaking from Charlotte. Two cars, right here. All the other spaces are the tenants, his employees. He just wants to monitor them so that he can No, no, that's a, that, um, there's no, there's no beauty traffic in there. They're just for storage, it's not a retail outlet or anything. They just, they just have to work. Up here, it's with this grasses, it goes about, so is the paving still here? Yeah, the asphalt is still as it is. We were gonna try to pave it up further. See, we're not even looking at and putting anything here, because that's where the crushed stone. But but even though that's paved it, I forget what the minimum was when I looked at the budget. Yeah, so to make sure that we're complying with that, we are not putting any here. So we're putting here, one, two, three, four, the tenants, my inventory, the inventory, but the the company vehicles, we just go back there. And and during the day, those company vehicles will be probably out of work most of the time. And as far as the traffic flow on the street, I don't see how we're gonna have I'm only displaying two vehicles. We're not putting up a sign like Diamond Chevrolet or anything. Basically, they were gonna be advertising on Craigslist or AutoTrader. People will call, come down, look at the car. So we're not gonna be attracting a lot of traffic. Mr. Regan is concerned that I won't be able to sell any cars because I
No, my problem, that's yours.
But but I understand. So having said that, we don't intend to to disrupt the flow of traffic at all.
So here's what I would suggest. Get some paint. Get some paint.
Get some paint.
Put dots where you want the parking spaces. We could have DPW get on there and make sure you conform into the parking spaces. If they say yes, then you can do whatever you gotta do.
We'll chalk them out.
That will be this will be approved, it's gonna continue.
Okay, we will chalk what we have given for you. And as long as DPW approves that, then we'll, I'm not gonna permanently stripe it, we'll do temporary.
Correct, correct, that's right.
Absolutely, we'd be happy with that.
Example, and you show that you have everything there and the turning raises, DPW goes down and approves it. Then I think you're all set. If they don't approve it, then you gotta start all over again.
Absolutely, yeah, that's fair.
Fair enough. May I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second. Favors?
Aye.
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 Have a a motion to approve with a contingent that he gets approval from the DPW to make sure you have the parking spaces and distance and turning radiuses.
So moved.
Second.
Favors, Jason?
Aye.
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 So, Jeremy and I, is it both?
Thank you.
Welcome. Next up on the list is applicant Kimmy Horn Associates requesting site plan approval under section 3.2.6.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a self-storage facility at 319 Washington Street, Auburn Mass, 01501, map 42, parcel 31. This has been continued from our October 10th meeting. I was gonna ask, but I already know.
We're already ready.
Give us your rundown.
Okay, so as of from the last meeting, Graves Engineering has given their full peer review and approval. So we're asking for approval for this round. And then if there are any questions or anything like that, then we can certainly talk through them, but that I can go more into the history of the project and everything, but I know everyone has the points as well.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions?
Gary Burtrand, 148 Milbury Street, we're the only residential or butter to the property, the commercial piece of property. And the only concern we have of the project is that the green belt. I don't really see anything in the plans about the green belt that has to be there between commercial and residential property. So we're the only residential butter to that piece of property. So we'll just call it South, somewhere up top.
So the project, oh my gosh, this mouse.
He's bringing it up on Google Maps.
Right up against where Where is, where is?
Say this green belt right here. That piece of, oh, it's kinda your property line right there, all the way to here. We're butters of that. And, excuse me, we just wanna make sure that that's, that's about a 30-year-old green belt right now. And the green belt, it's so dead 10, 12 feet up in the air, that you can see, we can see right through it. It really hasn't been maintained by the original property owner. And now it's changing hands and you're gonna have lights in the second story, we're a little concerned that the green belt is not gonna do the buffer it used to do. Single store, single story, we'd probably be okay just because of the sheer depth down that hole. That relative to plans you guys are coming up as well. So we're just concerned about that green belt right here. Between here and there.
I can't say that the biggest thing is that most of this property no. Uh, most of this is not getting developed at all. So there's a heavy amount that's not getting developed up in like this southeast section over here.
Yeah, I understand, but if you come up to where I am on this side right here, as I look through this green belt, it's unfortunately, this pulls down, it doesn't look horizontal as a vertical view. If you look ver- vertical, I mean horizontal, the green belt basically doesn't exist anymore. And my concern is, yes, when you put your two structures, one's gonna be right here, well, in here somewhere, then it's gonna be the other side of the high tension lines.
I can
Second story.
Yeah, but it's it's more over here is where everything is.
Yeah, that's fine, but still, what I'm saying is green belt doesn't really exist anymore there. Now that you've purchased the property, somebody, it's up to you guys to maintain the green belt.
Okay.
And we, you know, we could, you could go up there and take a look at it, you'd you'd look through it and see the same exact thing. That's the only concern we have.
Okay.
I'm sure if that's a, that's a zoning board or you guys, but somebody's gonna is bringing up about the green belt being existing.
I haven't seen the property in that light. So you're saying the green belt right now, you can look through it?
Yes.
Of course, you get now it's the fall, but I mean Of course, you get now it's the fall, but I mean in the summer.
Well, no, it's, you can see, it's their white pine trees right now that Billy Reizner put in back in the day, 30 years ago. And now it's all dead up to 10, 12, 15, 20. I'm not gonna exaggerate it. I don't know exactly how tall, but it's pretty tall. And you can see straight from any piece of our property up here, straight down Route 20. Just exactly, so. And that green belt was there for that reason, is to buffer the two zones, which is required by the I would have to say the zoning board. There's a green belt between the commercial property and residential property, RR. So.
So, you're putting up a two-story building, correct?
We are.
And that's the only concern I have, is the projection of the second story, the wall lights and whatnot.
I say that it's a two-story. It actually is, it's a bi-level. So, from your perspective, it actually is still gonna be only a one because as it goes down into, with greater grades, it's one story closer to where your property would be if it's over here, and then it's two on this side.
So, you'll be looking at the roof instead of the side of the building.
You're gonna be, you're gonna be looking at the mechanical equipment right on the top is where it's on the drawings.
So, I have a suggestion. Where the pine trees are dead or limbs are gone, 20 feet up, either put a fence up or put arborvitae down, that whole line.
That's all we're looking for.
That expensive?
Maintain, not necessarily maintain it, but to rejuvenate it now that the property's changed hands. Because before, it didn't bother us because there's nothing down there.
Right, but you're not gonna get arborvitae that are 20 feet tall.
No, absolutely, we understand. We're agreeing with that. We'll work with you on that.
What are the small arborvitae, three feet? I mean, in five years, you won't see anything.
You're exactly right.
Planting three feet apart, you're staggering. Actually, a minimal cost to be a good neighbor, let's say. And it's a natural fence. Instead of looking at a wood fence you have to maintain, the arborvitae just let it go.
Sure, we'll work with you. I mean, we're not here to stop you, we're just here to, you know, make that green belt back to where it is now that it's changed hands. Thank you.
So, does anyone else in the audience have any questions? Does anyone on the board have any questions? Go ahead, Ron.
Can you show the entrance and exit on Route 20?
Uh, the proposed one, I can pull it up.
Old Common, where you are right now, right?
This is Old Common. Washington Street is also called Route 20.
Milbury Street's up the other end, that's Route 20.
The road on left is Route 20.
Yep.
Yeah. So, in this case, I mean, I can go to the street view, but the there's nothing over here for really what's like proposed.
Going down towards Old Common now.
Yeah, but this is Route 23 here. Is there a specific area that you wanted to see?
What my main question is, is I, you, we, I think would like to see no left turn out of the facility.
Okay.
And how are you gonna guarantee that? I mean, there's a lot of different ways you could put marks. There's something that will mandate that they turn right and go off to the light.
Come on.
They have an island there at the entrance with a curve going
Is it, that's what I wanted to see?
Toward Milbury Street. And then the curve coming in from the south side, so cars coming down Route 20, heading towards Milbury Street.
Can take a right.
The other car's gotta swing up.
In order to exit, it's a directional right turn.
Yes, that's exactly what her island shows.
Yeah, is there any way that we can, I can pull up my computer as well and then go ahead and display the plans as needed? I know Adam, you have them as well.
I wouldn't even have to ask, because I can find it was salt tower.
Oh, God.
And since
It's not red. Save it down. I think it's under a message.
We should have the shot here, and they should have the
I think that's a little bit of me. Say. So.
So, as of right now, this is the plan. Um, so it allows for those coming in on Route 20, going this way, to take a right here, but they can't take a left out.
Can you assure us that with the sign there, no right, no left turn?
We can definitely add that.
That'd be great. So, I'm taking a quick look at the landscape plan. And I see on the slope toward his property, there's a lot of plantings, but I'm at a loss trying to find what MP and SC are on the plantings list. The next page, or the second page after that. It's XX and C and B1. I was just looking for the legend. It said, I'm just curious what the plan is.
What type of trees?
What are you calling out?
What trees?
In X, so I don't Some planting for I don't know. I could be the worst on the spot, but
I can double-check this, but right now, we should be calling out deciduous tree planting for that area. A combination deciduous shrub and
So, I don't know where the pine trees are on this plan. According to that slope that comes down to the back of the facilities, are you gonna build? I don't know where the existing, yeah, I don't know where the existing pine trees are related to the
It's further north, or page north.
It's further toward the upper part of the page?
Yes, so for existing, everything that's existing that's out there, this is all, um, I can actually pull up the existing plan as well, but what's usually going on through here is there's a bend right here that you can see on the plan. And then everything else like northwest. That should be on a different property. Because it's a little bit easier to see, but like right through here, as it's going through that bend, this is the property line.
And that's where the
As Old Common Road is doing a bend. And then there's another empty Van Gett line, page north of that as well. Are you talking about for here, or?
Yeah, so that's gonna be the building, correct?
Uh, this building and this one right here.
And they vote two?
They're both bi-level.
Okay. So, his property apartment is up on this side, correct?
I believe.
That's Milbury Street. Old Common Road's over there. So, he's up beyond his property line here.
Okay.
Two of them raised it for some reason. Don't ask me why I was wrong.
Okay, that's certainly something that we can do.
That would be
That we can do.
Make him happy and keep the green belt.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions? Audience, board? Go ahead, Rock.
So, the, um, the letter from National Grid, so I, I'm sorry, I apologize. I have not been able to read that. But did we get any, did you get any updated letter from National Grid?
Yes, so they are, they do, we still need to do the final signatures, but everything's been drafted. It's just being looked at by the double, by the two legal teams. So, that's where we're at right now. They expect that it should be done very soon. The rest of it, as of right now, should just be a formality.
And in that, are they showing a lot more commitment on allowing the easement?
Yes, so the easement decision on how wide it is in the square footage is basically, that part has been decided out. Um, it just ends up being more of like fees and everyone officially signing is where they're at right now.
Questions? May I have a motion to approve?
Close.
Oh, that's right. May I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
One second.
Eric, Jason?
Aye.
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 May I have a vote to approve the plan contingent upon them planting a green wall of arborvitae or some other evergreen? Their property, this side of the pine trees. So, they're growing, they're basically creating a complete screen across. So, he won't be able to see down to Route 20.
And you should look into the arborvitae to make sure you get the right, there's some different types. Some are more appropriate for that.
I'll get my landscape team on that.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Myself, John, and I, it is a vote. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is discussion of 71 Curtis Street subdivision. You're representing 71 Curtis Street subdivision.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Todd Broder here on behalf of the applicant. And we've discussed this project once or twice with you. It's Package Hog Farms subdivision, which was previously approved. And we're coming up against the expiration of the completion deadline. So, we submitted a request for an extension. We're in front of you previously. There were some questions about whether the plan would still comply with particularly the stormwater regulations and any updates that might have come into play between the last approval and now. Uh, the plans and materials were sent off to Graves Engineering, who performed a review and submitted a November 9th letter, which I'm hoping you're holding in your hand, which says, you know, they've got it and they reviewed it and
Approved it.
And they approved it. So, we have nothing additional at this time. Certainly happy to answer any other questions. Actually, one other thing I would add, just so you know, and I, because I didn't mention this last time. Uh, the assessor's office has started to assess this property or will as of January 1st, as subdivision lots. And that's, that's fine by us because that's the intention, is to build those out and have those lots. So, just wanted you to know that we'll be bearing the burden of an increase in taxes on this thing.
So, does anybody on this have any questions? Does anyone on the board have any questions?
When are you looking to actually start construction?
Soon as we get this extension, we can start to roll out the trucks. You know, the intention is to start quickly.
I've heard that twice before.
It's the president intention. Rocco Antonelli is here, if you'd like him to address that, but that's the, that's the intention.
So, my proposal is to give you a one-year extension. Does anyone have any argument with that?
No, I'm good with it.
May I have, we don't have to close this hearing because it's a discussion, so. May I have a vote to approve a one-year extension for this property?
So.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Myself, John, and I, it's a vote.
Great. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is modification to 10 West Tech Drive. Anyone here representing West Tech Drive? You're the last one in the room, so.
All right. Good evening. My name is, excuse me, my name is Alan Westman. I'm from KSID Architecture and Deer Design, uh, representing the project at 10 West, uh, West Tech Drive. Online, sorry for my voice, I've got a little bit of a tickle. Online as well, we have Brian Phillips from Langen Engineering, who can answer some of the civil engineering questions that may arise. We've been working with Adam, and the intention here is Eversource has, at their facility now, they're storing on the parking lot non-hazardous equipment like snow plows and trailers. And they're proposing to install a pole building over some of those parking spots so that these, this equipment is undercover.
Well, basically, it's a pole barn without sides.
It's a pole barn, there will be sides too.
There will be sides?
Yeah, but it won't be, it won't be heated, there'll be no water. There'll be a door up front so they can lock it. There'll be a concrete pad.
What's that purpose for, to have that? Is it in front of a, like a floating dock bay or something like that?
No, they just, um, as I understand right now, they have, uh, various pieces of equipment that they attach to their trucks like snow plows and trailers to bring equipment out to job sites.
They wanna be doing undercover.
And right now, they're sitting out in the parking lot, so they put them undercover just to protect the durability of those, that equipment long-term.
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
So, in this case, um, it's basically just, you're not, you're not, um, so this is coming in at the parking lot, this side, right? On the right side of the parking lot?
Yep, on the east side of the property.
You're not, um, uh, deconstructing the parking lot and then adding the, adding a coverage, right?
Um, no, this is, so the pole building is, uh, is a series of six-by-six pressure-treated posts that are driven into the ground with a concrete footing below. Uh, they'll go down to frost. And then there are panels that are installed in between that and roof on top of that. Um, once the pole building is completed, they'll come back and they'll put a concrete pad there just for durability within the building itself.
So, how deep do these poles go?
Um, well, below ground? They should go 48 inches to frost line.
How deep is, you have a cement sonar tube underneath or a full?
So, it's actually not a cement sonar tube. So it's actually not a cement sonotube, what they do is they, they have a six-by-six post, and they drive that in, and then there's a, there's a concrete, it's essentially a blob of concrete at the bottom, that, that's not much more, more technical term, but, um, and then that, then those posts are, since they're pressure-treated and they're submerged in the ground, then they're installing panels in between those.
Okay, so you said there's concrete on the bottom of that post?
In the footing, yeah. But it's not, but they're not pouring a sonotube footing.
Right, so that's attached to the p- post when you drive it?
Correct, uh, yeah, so they...
Has to be.
There has to be, right, yes.
Frankie Pile?
And how high above ground is that roof gonna be?
That's a good question, I'm not certain, I don't think it's... We have a structural engineer working on the, the drawings as we speak. But I have a preliminary, so I can tell you. So it's a forty, the overall dimensions are forty-two by sixty by fourteen-four. Fourteen-four is the peak of the building.
Fourteen-four to the peak of the building. So I don't know if it's, if it's one flat slope or it's a peak building, I don't, I have no idea.
It's a ga- it'll be, I believe they're proposing a gable roof.
Gable roof, and it's fourteen, on a twelve pitch. The post is gonna be roughly nine feet above ground, from the ground up to the top of the post.
I think it'll be, yeah, there'll be a little bit more, it might be closer to twelve, because at, well, no, you're right, it'll be nine at the base, at the, at the ends over by the, the soffit, and then, uh, and then as it peaks up, because it'll hold a twelve, twelve-by-twelve door.
Structural engineer designed this yet?
We do. We, we have a structural engineer working on it now.
So, we can approve that you can put it there, you have to go before the building commissioner?
Correct.
Get the actual structure approved? Because I don't think forty-eight inches is enough for the wind load, personally.
Yeah, so the, a little bit of the background of this modification was that, uh, the contractor hired by Eversource had submitted preliminary plans to the building department, and there was a delay, and then once there was more communication, there was a, a list of additional items that the building department was looking for. One of them was coming before your board, just to make sure that you were okay with it. So, once we have that, uh, we're also working on oil-water separator, uh, system. Um, and then the structural engineering drawings, so that will all go to the building department. But prior to doing that, we needed to come to you first.
Okay, so, you pour in a concrete slab. So you just mentioned an oil-water separator, you put, you must be putting a drain in that too, then?
There'll be traps, and, yeah. But there, but there's no, so the mechanic, the plumbing engineer has spoken with the plumbing inspector, and because part of the challenge of putting an oil separator in there in a drain is that there's no heat or water in the building. So they've come up, the, the plumbing engineer and the plumbing inspector have come up with an agreed system that will require maintenance, an annual maintenance, that they're both satisfied with. So that's what the engineer's designing now. I can read that to you if you want, if you wanna know what that is.
Anybody else have any questions? I don't have a problem where you wanna put it, but I just, usually, people come before the board, it's designed, um, the oil-water separator designed, stamped and approved, and all that, but, um, I'll ask for a motion to approve based on the location and the general construction, but you have to get it approved from the plumbing inspector, the electrical inspector, code enforcement, uh, building inspector, health department, because it's oil-water separator. So it'll be contingent on all that.
Yep, that's all, uh, that's all, all the preparation for those documents are in process.
Does anyone else have any questions?
When you, you're putting in the oil and water separator, what is it that you would be collecting? Is it the creosote off the poles or the?
So, yeah, that, that's, that's a bit of a...
The pressure-treated or whatever?
Well, that's been a bit of a debated item, because the, the engineers on the project are not convinced that it's required. So we've had conversations with the building department, but it's a plumbing requirement, plumbing code requirement, so it's being put in to catch, to catch really oil that comes off of anything that's in there, but that's the thing, there's, there's not intended to be any active vehicles. They'll be undercover, yeah. So there'll be a, a drain. Right, there'll be grease from probably the mechanisms that attach the plows and the axles on the trailers and whatnot.
They have a, a motion to approve based on all the contingencies they put on this? Yeah, it's a minor modification.
I make the motion?
May I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself, John Reed, is an aye, it is a vote. Good luck.
Thank you.
It was a minor modification, too?
We did. We voted all at once. So next on the, uh, agenda is the meeting minutes of nine-twenty-six. May I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of nine-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three, as submitted?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Myself, John Reed, is an aye. They have a motion to approve the meeting minutes as submitted for our October tenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting?
May I go on?
I have a second.
A second.
All those in favor? Jason?
Aye.
Aye.
Drakesh?
Aye.
Myself, John Reed, is an aye, it is a vote. There's no unforeseen business by me.
It's so, given that I'm, you know, I'm traveling with this new rule a lot, may I suggest that I step down as the vice chair and we have someone else join in as the vice chair?
We can do that.
Schedule off the next meeting. Schedule off the next meeting.
Yeah. So we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting. Well, we have enough people here to make the votes, so if they, we all go up.
Yeah, because it's not fair.
Can I interrupt, Nate?
No.
Okay. Uh, the next meeting is gonna be, uh, December twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion?
May I have a second? All those in favor? Jason?
Aye.
Sierra?
Aye.
Drakesh?
Aye.
Myself, John Reed, is an aye, it is a vote. Meeting now adjourned.